Thank you. Welcome to the Covington City Council Regular Council Meeting for Tuesday, June fourteenth. Welcome, everybody. This is our first in-person meeting in two and a half years, so it's great to see everybody here and to see everybody online who has joined us. And just as a note, in compliance with state law, city council special and regular meetings are being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. And with that, Krista, if you could please call the roll.
President. House Member Simomo.
Here.
House Member Porter.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Here.
Your Honor.
Thank you. Everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That Reagan, welcome for joining us online. And next up is approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda tonight?
No changes tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Reagan. I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as posted.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. And I do have one point of question, I guess, for Mark. Since online, we have had to do a roll call vote. Since we're in person, we need to do a roll call vote anymore.
You do not need to do a roll call vote.
Great. Thank you. Next up is a public communication for Juneteenth proclamation, and I would like to ask council to join me in front of the dais. We haven't had the opportunity to do this in person. I would like to invite the Equity, Culture, and Social Justice Commission. All those that are on the mission can join us up there. Give them out. They're all in the center here. Well, thank you all for the use of this. This is an honor to read this proclamation. And whereas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, enslaved Americans in Yellis County, Texas finally received word that they were free from poverty. As those who were formerly slaves were recognized for the first line as citizens, Black Americans came to commemorate Juneteenth with celebrations across the country, building new lives and a new division that we honor today. And whereas, in a celebration of freedom, Juneteenth is a day of profound weight and power as we recognize the long legacy of systemic racism, inequality, and inequality. And whereas, it is a day that also reminds us of our incredible capacity to heal, hope, and emerge from our darkest moment with purpose and resolve. Whereas, there is still more work to do as we recommit ourselves to the work of equity, equality, and justice. And we celebrate the centuries of struggle, courage, and hope that have brought us to this time of progress and possibility. Now, therefore, we in the city council of the City of Covington hereby proclaim June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, as Juneteenth. Then the City of Covington urge all citizens and businesses to join us in recognizing equity, equality, and justice in our community and commemorate the rule that this day represents. And I would like to give this proclamation to Ronalds and U R, Chair of our commission. And thank you. I want to thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for serving upon our mission and for anything that you have.
As I can say, I am so proud of Covington right now. You know, thank you all. I said it to you before. You offered your efforts and you asked, um, be an example for the rest of the state.
Thank you.
Just like to say, you know, the many things that we've talked about, some of the things we think about is why are you here? Why are you here? Why are you saying this to me? And always, yeah, I do want to say I have to get away with it. I was loyal that I have this to share, and this matters to them. This matters to everybody who is here, regardless of, you know, ethnic background, cultural background, regardless of all that. We are the one people. But to do the work, we have to recognize our history, meaning of pride for people. So, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Thank you all for being here tonight. We appreciate that. Next up is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Please note that to all participants pursuant to state law, RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five, campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. So I will look for those in the audience. If there's anybody that would like to hear in person, please raise your hand and approach the podium if you'd like to address council. And then, oh, we have a sign-in sheet. Sorry. I'm not used to that. Thank you, Joe.
I was like, where is he going?
I don't see anybody on here to... Is there anybody in the audience? If there's anybody in the audience online that would like to address council this time, please raise your hand. Anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening online? If nobody raised their hand, we will have a second opportunity to address council, a second public comment period towards the end of our council meeting. At this time, council is going to move into an executive session to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero subsection one subsection H for approximately thirty minutes. So at seven forty-one, we will return. You can stop the recording. Thank you all for entertaining our time in our executive session. We are back to our council meeting. Next order of business is to approve the consent agenda, which consists of items C one through C twelve, with a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Next up is new business item number one, to consider an appointment to fill council position number three vacancy. And council options that we have are that we can choose to select somebody tonight. We can choose to go to interviews based on qualifications. And I will leave that up to council and how they would like to proceed.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we schedule interviews on June twenty-eighth for the following people based on qualifications that have been discussed, and that would be Andrea Sarp, Deborah Hartstock, Jonathan Ingram, Lorraine Porter, Mark Lanza, and Robert Poole.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded to move forward with, to schedule interviews for council, city council position number three vacancy at our next council meeting, prior to our council meeting on June twenty-eight. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
First, I want to thank everybody who had applied. This is a tedious but fun job. We enjoy ourselves. By the way, we wouldn't be sitting here. And based on your letters, based on qualifications to the community, the service you provided to this community, we believe that these six people are qualified to, for interviews based on those qualifications.
Thank you, Jill. You got to put that to speak for your second.
I would just like to thank everyone that applied. It's really great to see so many committed people who live in our community.
Anybody else like to speak for or against the motion? Seeing nobody else raise their hand, it's been moved and seconded to move forward with to schedule interviews before our June twenty-eighth meeting for the city council position number three for the candidates Andrea Sarp, Deborah Hartstock, Jonathan Ingram, Lorraine Porter, Mark Lanza, and Robert Poole Jr. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you all. Next is new business item number two, to consider an appointment for the Parks and Recreation Commission. This council wished to take action tonight. And one thing I should remind everybody, raise your hand so I can see you before you start talking, so I can make the identify you. Anybody like to make, take action tonight?
Jennifer. I would like to move to appoint Patricia Smith. To fill position number seven on the Parks and Recreation Commission with the term expiring January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to appoint Patricia Smith to fill position number seven on the Parks and Recreation Commission with the term expiring January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, Patricia wants to be a part of the Parks Commission to help keep Covington green. She understands that parks need funding and understands that, you know, to give great parks to our residents that she's willing to do the work to figure out how to accommodate and provide alignment to the council. And she's super friendly and great, and I think she'll be a fun addition to the commission.
Thank you, Jennifer. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, there's one question that I think is my favorite question that we ask, and it's what, where do you see Covington in the next ten years? And it's always one of those ones where you can imagine and have, have some leeway, leeway when. And her answer, and I am paraphrasing a little bit, was to keep Covington Covington, not make it Seattle, not make it somewhere else, but keep it Covington. And I just, I, how I wrote it down, and if we can get that on a T-shirt somewhere, please, let's do it. But I think that's the way we, someone who wants to be a part of our Parks, Parks Commission and wants to see Covington remain Covington, but still have that growth to ensure that we're helping everybody, whether it be a neighborhood park or a community park and for the whole city. I'm all for that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Sean.
Yeah, real quickly, I appreciated Patricia's experience and kind of her passion that she brought, but I think, as I missed it, Patricia also mentioned, I noticed for the first time that our parks aren't just for our, our human residents. They're also for our, our animal neighbors as well, and I thought that was an interesting perspective that she brought, so I'm gonna support this nomination as well.
Okay. Sean, anybody else?
Yeah, I, one of the questions that she answered, what do you hope to achieve by participating on the commission, one of her answers was having lots of different types of parks available for different types of people, so different uses. So there's something for everybody of different sizes, neighborhood parks versus city parks, gathering spaces, and a way to bring community together, to have safe places for people to gather.
Thank you, Beth. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to appoint Patricia Smith to fill position number seven on the Parks and Recreation Commission with the term expiring January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Patricia. You are now on our Parks and Recreation Commission. Next up is new business item number three, to consider an appointment to the Equity, Cultural, and Social Justice Commission. Council wished to take action tonight. Joe.
I would like to nominate Michael Ramirez.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Michael Ramirez to fill position number and and this, on the Equity, Cultural, and Social Justice Commission with the term expiring September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, one of our questions is always, you know, please share what diversity, equity, and inclusion mean to you and why they're important. And everyone always gets a very good answer to that question, but I think the follow-up question of why are you interested in? Answer was the best when it says he wants to share his upbringing, his culture, and work on changing hearts and minds. That's what it's all about, is changing hearts and minds. We can't have a society that is filled with equity and inclusion if we don't share the same beliefs of everyone is equal. We have to have that equality and that belief. That's what he's going to bring to this commission.
Thank you, Jill. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure, and I'd segue right off of that. One of the next questions is how would you advocate for these things? And I, I don't think he even inhaled before he said by promoting it. And I appreciate that there's no fear in addressing the, the things that are necessary in our culture today. And one thing that people are afraid of is a thing that they don't know. And I just really appreciate his objective and perspective, and I think he'd be a wonderful addition to that commission.
Thank you, Christina. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Sean.
Yeah, again, real quickly, I echo all everything I've heard so far. I really liked Michael's answer to the third question, what approach to understand perspectives of others. You know, basically, he said, I'm gonna ask questions, put myself in their shoes, empathize, but then he also went on and said, and risk, and I paraphrase here, realizing that I may be wrong, you know, that I may be misunderstanding or, or have misunderstood the situation. And so I think that's a really good perspective to bring to this commission as well, to challenge your own beliefs and, and understandings there. And that's how we grow and, and life, so.
Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion?
Of course, everything else that everyone said about Michael, but also his comments about, you know, the challenges that we face in Covington. This is always an interesting question for these interviewees to see what they're gonna say, to see if they're brave and, you know, feel comfortable, I guess, you know, to, to answer that question. And, and I appreciated his candor in, you know, letting us know that he has witnessed racial tensions and he wants to help bridge that gap and talked about bringing them to the forefront and talking about them. And I, I think that someone that's comfortable doing that and willing to do that and bringing others along for the ride, it would be a great addition to the commission.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Michael Ramirez to fill position number nine on the Equity, Cultural, and Social Justice Commission with the term expiring September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Michael, congratulations. Next is new business item number four, discuss the selection of citizen and honorary citizen of the year. Carla, is Carla joining us tonight? Okay. Oh, there she is. Okay. I'll get used to this. I'm used to my four screens.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, Carla, welcome.
Hello. Well, we are finally back on track with a normal schedule for our Citizen and Honorary Citizen of the Year program. And we went out to advertise May seventeenth through June seventh to ask for nominations. It's kind of a shortlist this year, but nonetheless, they're great candidates that hopefully you had time to review. And those citizens, citizen and honorary citizen will actually get the chance to ride in the Covington Days Parade this year because we will be having it. And on a side note, we'll be inviting the last two sets of citizen award winners to also be in the parade. I know that was something we don't want them to miss because we didn't have it for two years. So at this point, we're open for your discussion.
All right, council. Thank you, Carla.
Yes.
So let's start with Covington's honorary citizen of the year for two thousand twenty-two.
Yes, Mayor, do we have a printout or were we just gonna all have to read it from our emails because I don't?
No, I'll open a device.
So I can, let me read them all.
That would be wonderful. I read it.
So our nominees for honorary citizen of the year, Adam Turley. Tamara Paul received four nominations, and then Justin Vanlandshu received two nominations. And does council wish to take action tonight? For discussion. We have three nominations, Adam Turley, Tamara Paul received four, and Justin Vanlandshu received two nominations.
To nominate Justin Vanlandshu?
Been moved and seconded to name Justin Vanlandshu as Covington's honorary citizen of the year for two thousand twenty-two. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. I think his approach and what he's done for Covington over the last few years, specifically around looking at ways to incorporate art, safety, SEPTED, and starting the Clean, Safe, Welcome Committee with the Covington Chamber. It's a multi-pronged approach to the service of bettering Covington and making it a place where people can feel safe and welcome. And he does a lot, not just monetary donation, but puts a lot of time into this community. He's very connected to it, so.
Thank you, Beth. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure. I think it's, I think it's Justin's passion, and I want to use that word. Passion for Covington is extremely evident. He lives and breathes Covington. Not, I mean, and, and I love that he's not above. I, I saw him on one sixty-four the other day with the Clean Committee, and, and it, it just, it's, it's humbling because I drove by and I'm like, oh, I'm on my way somewhere, but I want, he encouraged, he makes me want to be better in the things, and watching him sit through SEPTED and, and to see his brain, the wheels in his, in his brain turning on how he can immediately enter Covington and not just have to wait for the big, you know, the big changes. I just really appreciate how, just how passionate he is about Covington, and I think he deserves this.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion?
Um, Justin is one of those people that I see everywhere. I mean, like, there's things we've all, the different aspects of our, of our lives where we see Justin. And so really, he's everywhere, right? You give blood, there's Justin. You are talking to the Arts Commission, oh, they hooked up with Justin. Like, everyone and all the businesses are connected to Justin. It's really remarkable what an impact he has had on the community in the time that he has been here. And he's, he's a true ambassador of our community, and that is something that this, this recognition is for is really elevating their status, so everyone gets to see what a great person they are.
Any other person to speak for or against the motion? Been moved and seconded to, well, before that, I would like to say that I know Justin's gotten involved in the past couple of years in Covington, and he's really made himself visible for everything that he's done. Like you said, he lives and breathes Covington. I do want to say something about Tamara Paul as well. And she's been involved with Covington for a long time, even involved with the Covington Chamber back when Covington was beginning. And she's extremely involved with the community as well, making sure that everywhere in Covington, her, she has put her touch on, just as Justin is doing as well. And Adam has done that as well, being involved with the Chamber and the other events. Tamara Paul has been extremely involved with the Ready, Set, Play, and before that, with the Play on Blood. So they've all done a great job, and I will support council's decision after we vote on this. So it's been moved and seconded to name Justin Vanlandshu as Covington's honorary citizen of the year for two thousand twenty-two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Justin. Next is to name Covington's citizen of the year. We have one nomination before us, and that is for Deborah, Debbie Hartstock. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to name Debbie Hartstock, Hartsock, as Covington's citizen of the year for two thousand twenty-two. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, sure. You know, Debbie is one of those, I'm surprised, hasn't won it before. You know, she's involved in a number of aspects of Covington, not just civic, but also from her religious standpoint as well. Incredibly involved in the community, and, and it's interesting, just reading the nomination here, how many aspects of that she is part of, and thinking about different members of our community and how to we can provide service to them and, and make their lives a little better. So I'm excited to support this nomination. Thank you, Sean. Christina.
Sure, I, I can talk about Debbie, no problem. Also, somebody who's everywhere, absolutely everywhere. I mean, from the Rotary to the Chamber, to the storehouse, to the Clean, Safe, and Welcome Committee. Deborah, she's so sweet. I don't know if anybody has noticed. She just has such a sweet touch to everything. And it's so welcoming, and I, I just, I just think she's one.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion?
I can't say enough wonderful things about Debbie, just knowing what she's done for the community and, and getting a chance to work with her in those capacities, and she just, to, to council member Deborah, so at this point, she's just, she just radiates this genuine care and sweetness and compassion for everybody and is a really great representative for Covington. There are many people that are like that, but she's.
Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right. I just want to say that I've been involved with Debbie partnering, volunteering. I can't even remember the first time. It's been at least over twenty years. I know she's heavily involved with the storehouse, helping make sure that that runs and everything. Given the back-to-school fair that the storehouse used to put on, she was involved with it back when it was Covington Christian Fellowship, now Real Life Church, and she's involved, she was involved with Covington Days with me back in early nineties, and she has done an outstanding job. So it's, it's going to be honored to have her as our citizen of the year. So it's been moved and seconded to name Debbie Hartsock as Covington's citizen of the year for two thousand twenty-two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Debbie. Next up is new business item number five, resolution. Or consider a resolution repealing and replacing the Covington City Council policies and procedures to amend rules for remote participation and remote council meetings. I'll turn this over to Mark. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening, counsel. It's nice to see you all in person. I had started on January twenty-seventh, was only with you for about six weeks. It had like two meetings, so it's wonderful seeing everyone, but I won't take up too much of your time with this, but I think in the past two and a half years, we learned a lot of lessons about how we can participate in these meetings remotely, the transparency it brings. New audiovisual equipment installed, so we can be running a hybrid meeting with Mason and Krista performing their loser dream to make sure it all goes smoothly. But I looked back at what we had drafted for the council rules and what had been approved and they seemed kind of onerous and they didn't really fit what practice is right now for council. And so what I wanted to do was instead of having there be one week prep, one week in advance request combined with having a council meeting to vote on it every single time to approve a remote participation in a meeting. It just seemed like that was adding way too much, too many steps. And so I, what I proposed here for you today is anytime prior to the meeting, a request can be made to the mayor and the mayor will approve or deny that request. If in the mayor's absence, the mayor pro tem or the city manager. Now, if the mayor chooses not to approve it, council can also at that meeting could vote as a majority to let the person participate remotely. Those little checks and balances, so there's not, not all of the powers of the mayor and the council still keeps its role in being able to let people participate remotely. So chooses. The other thing that this rule change does is it brings in line state law, the OPMA, the Open Public Meetings Act was recently amended by the state legislature trying to take into account this exactly what we're talking about here today for having these hybrid and remote meetings promoting the use of new technologies to enable councils to not only participate remotely, but hold entire council meetings remotely when there's a declared emergency. So it's pretty straightforward, but I would be happy to answer any questions you have about any of the specific changes or reasoning why I had proposed those candidates.
Counsel, have any questions?
I just have some comments. I wanted to thank you for putting this together. I appreciate some of the added flexibility. I still have Regan on the phone, you know, now if someone has the sniffles, like, they may just shoot a text or call mayor and let him know. And so I appreciate this being a little more flexible for the times that we're in. So, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Mark? Seeing that this council was to take action tonight, the chorus is a motion to approve the resolution repealing and replacing the Covington City Council policies and procedures.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the resolution. Bill would like to speak to your motion.
It's really just clearing things up. In the last two years, like Mark said, we've kind of figured out how to do this. So it's, it's just good housekeeping. Keeps us on our toes a little bit with having to read all the red lines, but it's keeping us in line with what's going on now and providing for the future and for future councils.
Thank you, Bill. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your second?
No, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to, sorry. Approve the resolution repealing and replacing the Covington City Council policies and procedure. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And Mark, thank you for bringing this forward. That concludes our new business tonight. Next is future agenda items. And looking at our future agenda, we will be looking at a start time of about five o'clock to do interviews for our candidates. I will be, just to let you know, I will be asking all the questions going in rotating order of our candidates. We will set the candidates up in front of us here as we've done in the past and and then at that time, then we will move into our council meeting at seven o'clock. Does counsel have anything else they'd like to see on a future agenda? Right. With that, we will move into counsel staff comments and I will start with our acting police chief, Adam. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor and City Council, and thanks for having me. We obviously had our big incident this last week was the cow incident, so we had a good time, some of us learning how to deal with the bovine and managing to get it to its donor. So, but that's about all I have to report, so.
Thank you, Adam. Ethan?
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. I can share that we closed on the two Soco Park properties that we had been under contract with. That closed yesterday, so Soco Park is a little bit bigger now. Other than that, not much to report. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. Dawn?
Nothing for tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Selena?
Good evening, counsel and mayor. Two things to report tonight. First thing is, if you have not heard yet, Ryan Harriman, our planning manager, will be leaving Covington July seventh. He's taken a role at Mercer Island, so we're sad to see him go and thank him immensely for his role as planning manager in the Community Development Department. It's going to be a hard role to fill, but we are in process of casting our net and hoping to find some talent to fill these spaces in community development. The other thing I'd also like to report, if you have also not heard this, but Toll Brothers has officially made their offer to Oak Point to take over the Lake Point Urban Center. And so they'll be closing on that property next month. And so that's good news. One of the questions I anticipate is going to come up is what does that mean for the DA? And unless Mark disagrees with me, everything on the DA will transfer over to the new developer. They'll be picking that up and running with that. And those same rules and regulations will apply to them. I will just say that Mark and I and Dawn, I think most of the folks on leadership team will be kind of navigating that transition with Oak Point to Toll Brothers. And I know that they're going to be very eager to get moving on that, so we'll have more to come on that relationship and how that, that transpires in the future.
Thank you, Selena. And Carla, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, I just wanted to report that our fun, awesome summer program, Ready, Set, Play is getting ready to kick off. We will actually launch it this year at the Chambers Health and Wellness Fair on June twenty-fifth, which is at MultiCare from ten to three, I believe. Carmen will be on hand, Mayor Wagner, I believe, will be on hand as well to kick that off. And we're really excited. Chambers worked really hard to get twenty-three participating businesses, a few new ones and a few that dropped off. Just with all of the, the last couple of years of pandemic things, they don't have the capacity to keep participating. So we also have an amazing new prize pack this year. And, and some of those prizes, I anticipate we will have a lot more finishers this year because the prizes are things like a fifty-dollar savings account credit, swim passes, beach ball, pedometer, cookie, crumble cookie and Chick-fil-A coupons. And then there will also be grand prizes where anybody who completes the program and gets a prize pack will go into bigger drawing for things like Mariners tickets, bicycles, a three-month Aqua membership to the Aquatic Center and a few more items. So we're really excited about that and hopefully for those of you have littles, you'll be participating this summer as well.
I will definitely, well, not me, but my girl. Regan? Welcome back. Did we lose you again? Are you there, Regan? Oh, Casey, sorry. I don't know how I missed.
I'll take his, I'll take his place. So we had a kind of a notable financial milestone this last month, so I just wanted to share it with you. Our real estate excise tax sales in May, we brought in a total of a little over two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. There was forty-eight existing home sales, twenty-five new home sales and one parcel of land, but this was the, that this month we saw the highest number of home sales that we've ever had. And we've already reached about ninety-eight percent of our nine hundred thousand dollar budget. So I'm really looking forward to that Oak Point sale that will take place next month and that will add a big chunk to our REIT coffers as well. So that's exciting stuff. I just want to share it. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey.
Thanks.
All right. I don't see Regan back, so let's go to Mark.
Thank you very much. We do not have an additional executive session tonight. It's really nice to see everyone. The only other thing I wanted to add was for the council appointment process. This next meeting, if an appointment is not made, then it will, the ninety days will run and go to the county to make that appointment. So just wanted to make sure you, that deadline is upcoming, it's July eleventh. But that's before the next meeting takes place. So that's all I have and thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Krista?
Yes, Regan is trying to reconnect, so hopefully he'll be able to join us in a moment. But I do have three items for you. One is to request council consensus to purchase a total of eight tablets. It could be iPad or Androids. We'd like to purchase a tablet for each of the seven council positions in addition to one as a backup. The estimated cost would be about five hundred dollars per device, that's a one-time cost of approximately four thousand dollars, as well as a forty-dollar per year management software. So that would be approximately three hundred and twenty dollars per year ongoing. And the purpose of purchasing iPads or Android tablets would be so that council could navigate through the council packet electronically at the DAS rather than using people. So I'm just looking to see if I can get council consensus to move forward.
Your consensus for council, just raise your hand and do that.
They would stay here at the DAS, right? I believe we'd be developing a policy.
So you can take them home to.
I would kind of prefer to keep them.
Or your kid, take it.
Yeah, or children, yeah.
And we can come up with that policy once we get it.
Okay. Thank you. The second item is I'd like to request council consensus about our second August council meeting. And if council would like to move forward with.
I had that on my notes to bring that up, so thank you for bringing it up.
Okay.
So there is consensus, counsel, the second council meeting in August.
Okay, thank you. And my last item is to set a date for the mayor's day of concern for the hungry. That is typically on a Saturday in September. Our human services planner has asked for us to start planning that, so we're looking at either Saturday, September seventeenth or Saturday, September twenty-fourth.
I'm out of town the twenty-fourth, but I'm in town seventeen. What was this one?
Yeah, probably the twenty-fourth.
Seventeenth, what day is working remaining?
So the question would be is work with the storehouse to see which day works with them. So I'm, I'm good either day. Seventeenth is better, but I'm good either day.
Okay, I will work with our human services team to work with some of that. Thank you. That is all I have for tonight.
Oh, yeah. All right. Thank you. Christina?
First. I'm just waiting for summer to begin. Honestly, we had field day at the school today and it's like this. But I am excited. The kids are finishing school this month, actually this week for us and just honestly really excited to see. I, I think Covington is hungry to do in-person events and to have a summer where we can bond and get to more neighbors and maybe barbecue together and you know, our Covington Days and maybe the Fighter Fest, but I, I'm just excited for, for in-person events and an awesome summer in Covington.
Great to see everybody. Nice to be able to view our residents that are coming to participate and listen to the meetings, so thank you. And also looking forward to next week's AWC conference down in Hoover. Saw the lineup of sessions and modules and looking forward to learning some new stuff to bring back.
Thank you, Beth. Sean?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just appreciated commission interviews tonight. Again, always energized to see people volunteer for, to help Covington and then I'm excited about the slate of candidates that we will move forward for in our next, next meeting. So yeah, and great to be here in person and see everyone. Thanks.
Thanks, Sean. Jennifer?
I had a couple of questions and then a couple of comments. I did want to confirm that Toll Brothers will come give a council presentation, introduce themselves. Is that happening? Maybe Selena?
Yeah, I'll jump into that. So we just got that news this week from John Harkness and I immediately sent out an email to kind of get the ball rolling for us to start touching base. So as soon as we touch base with him, kind of at the staff level, we'll definitely be talking with them about how they want to introduce themselves to the council.
Okay.
More to come.
Thank you. And then I wanted to make sure that somehow it gets communicated, maybe to Krista, that Michael Ramirez did want to be considered for economic development when that position opens. I know it's not open and wasn't on our agenda, but he did apply for both. So to keep track of that. And then lastly, I'm really excited to be here after almost two and a half years in person with all of you. Congratulations, Beth. It's great to get to see you at the DAS instead of on a screen. And like Christina was saying, I am really excited. There are so many summer events this summer compared to last, lots of concerts in the park, movies, camps. I have kids going to multiple camps. I have a kid working at some of the camps. So it's, it's, it's a great way to start summer with in-person meeting and so, yeah. And thank you to all of staff for making it hybrid. I know that was really important for council and it's going extremely well.
Bill?
So I want to say after two and a half years, it's really nice to be back in this room with all of you. And I know some of our staff is remote and I understand that it's the probably going to be the plan going forward, but I really am thankful to be back here. And I found it funny, two years ago, I had gone to the AWC conference down in Olympia for City Action Days and I left my notepad that I got from there here and it's still sitting here. So we might need to talk with the people who do the cleanup or maybe me, I may need to just store stuff somewhere else, but that's, I found that funny. So that's nice, but I'm also very thankful for everyone who applied to be our next council member. I'm looking forward to our interviews. Understand, it's, it's going to be a, a long meeting for all of us, but it's a meeting that's very important. I'm looking forward to it. And then on another note, on June sixth, a senior at the Home High School took their life. It's sad when anyone takes their life. It's sad that that's happening still. It's, I would love to live in a society where none of that happened. Remember to reach out to those that you may not have seen in the last two years or the last two months even. Reach out to your loved ones. Reach out to your friends. Let them know they matter. Get them help if they need it. Ask for help if you need it. As someone who's suffered from depression, as someone who's gotten the help, it's important. Make sure that you are communicating with the people you love and make sure you can find the help you may need. All right.
The point taken. These last two and a half years have been very hard on everybody, but especially our kids. The amount of bullying that has been going on is even higher than it has been in the past. So constant communication, talking to everybody, whether phone, in person, or just reaching out and saying hi. Helps. And just asking, or just say, how are you doing? How are you really doing? Uh I just have um Beth mentioned um Association of Washington Cities Conference, the annual conference is finally back in person. And there are a lot of great. Sessions that are going on. Aaron Jones will be our speaker for the general session, reconnect, realign, renew. Bridges to heal the US, so that she's a very, you haven't had the chance to hear her speak. Um look her up, she's got uh quite a few things online, I believe they're on YouTube. Very dynamic speaker and um she really knows how to draw you into uh participates. And of course, Ann McFarlane will be there to really draw you in with dinosaurs and everything about how to do a. That's a very good session as well. Um. SCA Board, uh the board meeting is tomorrow. I am still the treasurer through the end of the year and my term is up with SCA Board. So if you know of anybody in South King County that is interested in being on the SCA Board, let me know or let um. Actually let me know and we can talk. I'm happy to sit down and talk with anybody about it. It's been a great six years or five and a half years. I won't know what to do with myself because on the board is just one meeting a month, but if you get involved in the executive committee, it's three meetings a month. Uh but it's been a lot of fun. The uh and we are working on uh. Getting interviews and setup for those to fill the position, Paris Consulting, who we hired. We hire our new, look for potential candidates to replace Deanna Dawson, who is now the executive director for AWC. And Carla, um this is our twenty-fifth year celebration for Covington. We've been. August thirty-first of this year is twenty-five years that Covington's been and it's thirty years for the Covington Chamber of Commerce, so um. Maybe we can do something in Covington Days uh to do that twenty-five year celebration and I am happy to help with whatever is needed. The way it's not on just your shoulders.
We do have a plan in the works. Um just wanted to let you know that. Um and and we were looking at doing um an event closer to actual birthday date. Perhaps one of the movies in the park, um just because Covington Days, there's so much to compete with. Um there and staff is so tied up with all of the events around that. Um that we figure we could focus better on a, on a different event and then invite everybody to join us and kind of wrap up the summer with that last final movie.
That sounds great.
Awesome.
Uh hopefully I'm in town that uh for that last one.
August twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I'll be back. I'm, I am taking a family vacation in August. We will be gone and no cell phones will be working. Whoops, I dropped it. So, thank you Carla for that update. Uh with that, I have nothing else, so we'll move in. Did Regan ever join us? No, I do not. I know he is going to be flying back. Um because it is right now. Yeah, because it's uh six AM where he's at, right?
Can we just say that Regan now holds the record for the uh more the largest gap in placement of where he's at compared to us for a meeting?
Yeah, more remote. All right, this brings us to our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in city hall and or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. Is there anybody in our audience here in person wishing to address counsel? Jonathan? You okay? You want to get some water first or? Well, take your time. You're bored?
That's last I remember. Uh we had a lot before, lots before and maybe it was all the mayor gave us during twenty days, obviously for that. It's been different since we felt we were before, how third, he has to be, he can type in. I send all of us in the table, both they need and the families to smile. I hope that everybody in the audience, you cannot tell uh this is good, though. There have been so much demand for that, they went out and they all, they tell me we ran out, we need more of this and more of that. Aggregates, hey, people will sign up for the bidding in the main slot and the ones in all the other, so I'm worried. People were there for a few things, but people were really there. They're out. So I would be all around.
Okay, Jonathan, um again, it's on the last Saturday and it's at Safeway?
Safeway.
And what time?
Uh ten AM to four AM. I'm trying to get sort of how the party started.
Perfect. Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Thanks for letting me know.
You bet.
And it's a part of the city life.
It is. Thank you. Is there anybody in the person audience that would wish to address counsel this time? Let's look at our other audience virtually. Is there anybody in the virtual audience that would wish to address counsel this time? Please raise your hand.
Oh, there's one again.
All right, seeing nobody in the audience wishing to address counsel, let's go to our city manager, Regan Bulley. Welcome back. You made it just in time.
Sorry about that. I had to reset the Wi-Fi router and everything, so I apologize for that disruption. I just uh had a couple uh quick uh updates. One, so awesome that you're able to be back in council chambers. Hope you enjoy the. Upgrades with the new paint and logo sign and um all of our new audio visual. It's really exciting to have all that uh available and in place. And also I did send out an email about decision cards with our uh twenty twenty-three budget kickoff. Uh Jeff asked us, there is a a a deadline date of August fifth to have those turned in, so if you need any help with a decision card that you may want to submit, please just reach out to me. And we'll help uh get it going. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Regan, and uh thank you for joining us at, what is it, six thirty where you're at now? Five thirty?
Uh five, five thirty, yep.
Well, thank you for joining us and have a safe trip back.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Bet, thank you. There is no executive session tonight and before we, I just want to say thank you to Mason, our IT team and Krista. For helping making sure that this runs well and getting all this set up. Um I think it went perfect.
Yeah.
So thank you. So thank you for doing that and um really appreciate and appreciate everybody, all of our staff. For everything they've done these past two and a half years, um being remote and going through this hybrid. I know it's been a challenge. And uh thank you to all of our residents in Covington, the three of you that are here tonight and those that were here earlier. And everybody else that has gone through um this COVID. I know it's not over, but um. I think that we're over this hump hopefully and that we are moving forward um with progress. With that, the council meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-two. Thank you.